Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is May 11th, 2021. This is our electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. It is a virtual meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Yes, and council members, please remember to state your city and state where you're currently residing. Dave Abdullah.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Azuhair Abdalhak.
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Mo Baydun.
Dear Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Robert Coniston.
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan, present.
Denise Malinowski, Mexico.
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan, here.
And Ray Muscat.
Here, Wayne County, Dearborn Heights.
And Tom Winslow.
Here in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Chair, here you have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have Councilman Winslow lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. At this time, we have agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the May 11th, 2021 electronically held regular meeting agenda as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those approve? Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have approval of the minutes. This is the minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of April 27th, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of April 27th, 2021, as attached in item 4A, be approved.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is it?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I have public hearing and comment on agenda items. This is two minutes. You need to state your name, city, county, and street. Is there anybody that would like to talk on agenda items only? You have two minutes. Okay. Director Hashem, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mayor Bazey. Madam Chair, I'd like to talk about item 7D, as in David. Due to some miscommunication on my part with the administration, I am respectfully asking that you remove item 7D, as in David.
Okay, thank you. We will.
Thank you. Have a good time. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment on agenda items?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead. You have two minutes, please.
I believe that we'll have to amend our, our, uh, our motion for accepting the, the, uh, agenda for.
Okay, let's do that after, while we.
We'll refer back to the administration.
That's what I was gonna say.
We'll refer back to administration, please. It's cleaner that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other public hearing or comment on current agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on. Next, I have consideration of bids.
Council Chair.
Let me, let me go, hold on, let me correct myself, please. I have fund transfers and current claims.
Wait.
Here, we have the public hearing for the corporate fund budget.
Corporate fund budget.
Okay. All right. Excuse me. Okay, next, we have corporate fund budget public hearing. Yep, that was under there. I missed that. Corporate fund budget on public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I recommend that the Dearborn Heights City Council open the public hearing for the purpose of hearing comments and/or objections, if any, to the proposed corporate fund budget for the city of Dearborn Heights for the fiscal year 2021-2022, as outlined in item 5A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat at this time? Would anyone like to comment on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
We're not finalizing the budget by doing this, are we?
No, this was, this was, um, publicized. And today was the date that we were supposed to have the hearing for it. Maybe Madam Clerk would like to explain that further?
I'm sorry, first, we have to, I don't know if we, um, took a roll, or took a vote on approving that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Now it's open for public comment. Go ahead, please.
Okay, you wanted to, he asked the question, I'm sorry, Councilman Muscat. This is just a public hearing, which we do every year. It's according to the charter that, um, four weeks, it's, um, the public hearing, request for public hearing is placed on the agenda the first week in April, the first meeting in April, to have a public hearing the first week, or the first meeting in May, to give the residents an opportunity to comment on the proposed budget, just so that you know, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have Vince Strupkowski. Go ahead, please. You have two minutes. No, I'm trying to unmute him. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. It's got me confused because I actually lowered my hand. But anyway, I was, um, considering the, um, the, um, excuse me, the cable program. The director, if that could be merged possibly with the library program. It's both educational. And I think that would be a great choice or a great combination to have that ran out of the library. If that's feasible. You know, just something to think about.
Good talk.
You done?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Councilman Abdalhak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items. I understand that we are expecting close to $24 million in funds from the federal and the state and the county and relief money because of COVID-19. I would recommend that the mayor create, I mean, make the position of the assistant instead of Chief of Staff to become administrative, uh, administration affairs director. And it becomes, uh, you know, director of a department. Because there will be lots of people working on the projects, and we need somebody to really follow up on everything. And I would like, uh, the same thing for the compliance and grant director to be permanent job in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Abdullah. Go ahead, please.
Just want to comment on one of the residents, Vince Strupkowski's suggestion. I, I, you know, now I'm thinking about it. I think it's a genius idea. I think it's something that we should definitely look into because the two departments are aligned. And if nothing else, even if, you know, I know a lot of students go to use the library. So for them to be able to see the interaction, how the cables put together and the shows are put together. Obviously, we'd have to have a soundproof room, but again, I don't know, just except we worked out, but I think it's a genius idea that definitely should be looked into. A very good job, Vince. I think it's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Anyone? At this time, do I hear a motion to end our corporate fund budget public hearing?
Council Chair. To end our.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 PM.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I move that City Council approve current claim 6-1 through 6-29 as submitted.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under.
I'm sorry, if it's not too late, I, I did have, uh, discussion, if it's not too late, if you don't mind. And, and it's just something I keep thinking about. So if you look at a lot of other cities, for example, Dearborn, as one example, that's one I happen to watch the shows a lot. You don't see this type of, uh, you know, the, the transfer of funds being voted on by council members on a regular basis. And I'm just thinking out loud here and just throwing it out for the, for a little bit of a discussion. Is this something that's really that, that important for us as a city council to deal with? The different bills that are coming into City Hall, whether it's 500, you know, $2,000 here, $3,000 bill here. Maybe just giving us a summary, but I don't know if we necessarily have to vote on it because we have people in place to be able to run the show and do what needs to be done, whether it's the fire department and what they purchased, whatever. When they need to purchase something that's different, but when they're paying regular, everyday bills, I, I just find it almost like, I don't know, not as necessary for us to be able to vote on it because I don't see it almost any other city. I do know that this came about at one point, a while back, because there was some, uh, quite a while back, before I even was on the council, because there was some tension between the council and, and the current mayor at the time. And there was some, you know, whatever, what I call it. Bottom line, that's why this came in, but I, I'm just, I'm just finding it like we're spinning our wheels, honestly.
Councilman, I do believe it's a charter issue. Once it's above a certain dollar amount, it must be approved by council according to the charter.
As I recall, this was through a resident. What I've heard from a lot of people, this was through a resident, I'm sorry, not a resident, I take it back. A councilwoman that had suggested this at the time, and I have her name in mind, but I'm not gonna say it. And, and that's why it was done. So I, just throwing it out there, I, I don't know if it's worth doing that all the time.
Since I do, there is other hands up ahead of time, but I do believe this is a legal issue, so I'm gonna call on Corporate Counsel Miaki for his opinion on this.
Yes, Council Chair and other members of the council. This is an issue that was discussed recently because of a number of issues that came up with regards to the amounts. And there is a provision in the charter, and I am going to be providing an opinion to the administration, which I'm sure the administration will be able to share with members of the council. That some of these expenditures can be pre-approved with the idea that the mayor would basically be the one who would end up making the decision on an ongoing basis. Uh, and that could be subject to later review by the council. But there is an actual provision in the charter that provides for that, and I think that actually has been on a bigger basis of what has been done in the past. So there will be, um, a recommendation for myself to the administration, which I'm sure that, uh, the mayor, uh, after we have an opportunity to discuss it, would be likely to share with your honorable body. Thank you.
Thank you. Now the Corporal Counsel Miaki has chimed in. Does everybody still have a question of any kind?
No.
Then I guess everybody wants to lower their hands. Or do you want me to lower your hands?
You go ahead. Wants to.
He lowered his hand. Councilman, let me run this. Okay. At this time, we're gonna move on. We have consideration of bids. This is for the Park and Recreation Director Constant Bit Award for Canfield Community Center entrance doors.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the replacement of the entrance doors at the Canfield Center to H&amp;H Glass and Metal Inc. in the amount of $14,303, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. Funds have been allocated in the 2020-2021 Recreation Department Budget. In addition, authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the companies that participated in the bidding process, as outlined in item 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Constant Bit Award for Canfield Community Center floor tiles.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move, uh, Dearborn Heights City Council award a bid for the replacement of the floors at Canfield Community Center to Dean Flooring in the amount of $3,800, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. Funds have been allocated in the 2020-2021 recreational department budget. In addition, authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds and, and the companies that participate in the bidding process, as outlined in 7B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Constant Bit Award for the Richard A. Young Kitchen Renovation Project.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council award a bid for the kitchen renovation project at the Richard A. Young Center to MBCM Lux Interiors in the amount of $31,309.5, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. Funds have been allocated in a 2020-2021 Richard A. Young Capital Outway Account. In addition, authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the companies that participated in the bidding process, as outlined in 7C.
Support.
Support. Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have CEDD Director Hashem Request for Bids for the CEDD Professional Legal Service for all federal grant programs, plans, and projects. He has asked us to refer this back to the administration. Would someone like to make that motion?
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I move that City Council, uh, refer this back to the administration, 7D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have, again, Park and Recreation Director Constant Request for Bids Replacing the Tile Floor in the Library Connecting Foyer and Card Room at the Berwin Recreation Center.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, I want that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for repairing the guest rooms at the Richard A. Young Center. The funds for this project are in the 2020-2021 Richard A. Young Centers Budget, as outlined in item 7E.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Constant Request for Bids for a fireworks display to be held on July 1st, 2021, at the Warren Valley Golf Course.
Madam Chair.
I'm sure.
I think we missed one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We did.
Replacing the tile floor in the library.
Yeah.
No, that's what I just read.
It was the Richard A. Young one.
She skipped the.
You know what happened? You know what happened, Madam Chair?
Okay.
You read the, you read the headline for F, and then I made the motion for E. That's why.
Okay, so where should we back up to then? F?
So I would just, I would just start with F again. Because E was made, and I made it from beginning on, so you just.
You made the right.
Okay, we'll get this right. All right, Park and Recreation, Recreation Director Constant Request for Bid Replacing the Tile Floor in the Library Connecting Foyer and Card Room at the Berwin Recreation Center.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the City Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for replacing the tile in the library connecting foyer and card room at the Berwin Center Recreation Center. The funds of this project are in the 2021 Recreation Budget Senior Citizens Account, as outlined in 7F.
Support.
Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Constant Request for Bids Firework Display to be held on July 1st, 2021, at Warren Valley Golf Course.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorizes the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for a fireworks display to be held on Thursday, July 1st, 2021. The Warren Valley Golf Course, as outlined in 7G. Second.
Support by Councilman Winslow. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, okay, Councilman Abdullah.
Um, and others have the same feelings, uh, looking at this from, it's just my personal opinion. With everything going on in the pandemic and the fact that we got a social distance and the fact that money's tight nowadays for not only for our city, but for a lot of other cities. I just, uh, you know, as much as I know this would be enjoyable to a lot of people. I think with everything going on with COVID, and you're gonna typically get crowds of kids, adults, seniors getting all together, close together. I think this particular year, in my opinion, we should just, uh, put it on the side, save the money this year, and then reassess this, uh, next year.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Baydun.
Madam Chair, thank you so much, and to our honorable counsel, and, and thank you so much to our Director Constant. I think this is actually an incredible idea. Uh, however, I feel that since, you know, we don't really have a festival, we're not kind of bringing, you know, renovate or generating any money towards us, seeing that it's $20,000. I think that's, uh, that's something that I think we should be able to hold off till next year. I also want to piggyback on what Councilman Abdullah said with it being a, you know, a pandemic. I know we're at 55%, where the state has already gotten vaccinated. But we're only at 25% capacity. I know that our neighboring cities have also canceled their fireworks shows. I don't feel that this is something we need to do this year, but I definitely I would concur with doing it next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Muscat.
Yeah, I, uh, Council Chair, thank you. I agree with, uh, Councilman, uh, Dave Abdullah and Councilman Mo Baydun. Plus, um, I, I do want to have this again, if we can start maybe a year from now. But I think what we need to add in there, up to the discretion of the fire chief. Okay, because when we have drought seasons, um, you know, it, it would behoove us to go to the fire chief and ask him, uh, hey, uh, is this safe enough to do that this year? Uh, and along with the police chief, because ultimately, they're the two that are going to have to be fighting stuff if something happens. So, um, I'd like to have, if we do this, which I'm sure we can in the future, that we include both the fire chief and the police chief in on this.
Thank you. Next, I have Council, Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree with Councilman Muscat and others. I think having the, uh, fire chief and the fire marshal involved is very important. Years ago, we did have fireworks at the Canfield Center, and there was a, an accident. The rocket shot into the crowd, and people were injured, and the city discontinued the fireworks after that. And as we all know, there's a real problem around the 4th of July of people shooting off fireworks in their backyards. Uh, I know that now, uh, Greenfield Village shuts off the fireworks, and I, I think that's it. So I think it's a good idea to look at this next year.
Thank you. I also have a tendency to agree that that's quite a bit of money during a pandemic. We're not sure where we stand financially at this point. Uh, we need to wait for the dust to settle and figure out where everything's coming from. Um, I think it's a wonderful idea. We should do it next year. And maybe plan more festivities around it than just the fireworks display. Like, again, I'm worried about social distancing and not enough people are vaccinated yet. Okay, next, we have Kim Coniston. And when I lower your hand, I do put your name on a list. Please don't keep raising it. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I just would like to bring up a couple of things. You guys all bring up good points. However, um, in regards to the expense, I actually do have a, a person who is actually donating $15,000 to go towards the fireworks. So I thought that that was a, a great thing by one of our community members. Um, we are also using a band that we've carried over a deposit for, for the last two years of the Spirit Festival. Um, I'm not sure at this point what will happen with the balance that we paid for that band, because we've carried it over for, uh, two years. This would be the third year. So, um, obviously, those two, three things defray the cost tremendously. Um, the event is gonna be held at Warren Valley. It's gonna be completely outdoors. There is going to be plenty of space to social distance, and also, as far as safety goes, Mr. Constant, he was correct about that, but I don't think that he mentioned that the fireworks were at the Canfield Community Center. So what they did was they shot them off at the ball field, and people were allowed to sit like right in the Canfield parking lot and in the grassy area behind the building, which was way too close. With us owning Warren Valley now, it's ideal because we can set the fireworks where they're being shot off back further into the, uh, I don't know, 18-hole golf course, if you will. So there's plenty of, uh, room for distancing and everything else, and as far as expense goes, most of it's going to be donated. I believe what you guys are saying as well, but I also believe that, that, um, from what I'm hearing, a lot of people are, um, tired of not having things to do, and so, you know, I think that we need to look at both sides of it. And, um, the few people that I have mentioned the possibility of this happening, we're very excited and very happy to see that we were doing something. We're not doing a full-blown-out festival. We're not doing rides, obviously, and the rides would be a very big issue, especially if people are to get sick on the rides. Um, but we are gonna be outside. We're gonna be social distance. People can wear their masks. And there's plenty of space where we're not gonna have a safety issue. Mr. Muscat brought up the thing about the police chief and the fire chief. They are, um, also recognized within this RFP as well, as being a decision-maker in, um, us having the fireworks in case we do have an issue. The Fire Marshal's word stands if it's canceled. Um, he has the right to cancel it. It is in the RFP. So with all of that being said, I will let you guys make the decision, but I wanted to make sure you had all the information in regards to this event.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Councilman Abdullah.
Well, Kim, uh, Director Constant, first of all, I, I commend you for bringing in somebody to donate $15,000. That's pretty good. That's great. But most importantly, I just want to commend you for all you're doing. Um, it's not gone unrecognizable by people like myself and other council members seeing some of the changes you've been making in the recreation department. So God bless you. Continue to do good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have, uh, Corporate Counsel Miaki.
Yes, I would, uh, add to what has already been stated. Anomaly should the fire department and the police department be consulted? But I think we would also need to end up consulting with MMRMA if this was to end up being done in terms of our potential exposure with respect to this particular matter and whether or not we would have coverage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Baydun.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And again, I just also want to say, uh, what, uh, Councilman Abdalhak, or Councilman Dave Abdullah is always saying, you, you definitely are a superstar, Mrs. Coniston. You're definitely going above and beyond. You're doing a lot of work, and I, I mean, going through this every time I see something coming in from your office, I'm so happy. I genuinely want you to know that. But I also want you to know that we want to make a decision for the future, understanding that, hey, I don't want something to go wrong this time. And we, and, you know, and it ruins it for the, you know, remaining years. I think it's an unbelievable idea. To me, I, I, you know, I watch fireworks. My wife's birthday is July 3rd. Fireworks shows, that's all I take her to for her birthday. Uh, so I would love to take her one in Dearborn Heights, but I think with, you know, everything going on in the pandemic, I think we should push this for next year, and let's see if that man will keep us with the $15,000. Even if you want me to reach out to the band and say, hey, we're in a pandemic, give us one more year. I'd be more than willing to assist you in that. Thank you, Miss Coniston.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Winslow.
Thank you. Um, well, you know, the, uh, popular thing to say would be, uh, let's not do this because of the pandemic and social distancing. However, um, I think it's a good idea. You couldn't ask for a better place to hold an event like this. You could spread people out in groups of, uh, you know, small groups over, you know, square mile. You could limit the amount of people that come in. Um, it'd be good for the Warren Valley Golf Course. It'd be good for the people. I think this is something that we should think about, uh, maybe table until next meeting, and maybe look into a couple of these other issues and get, get some more different parameters that we can look into as far as how we could. Get, get some more different parameters that we can look into as far as how we could, how we could pull this off instead of just saying let's not pull it off.
Okay, Councilman, at this time, we do have a motion on the table. Cabling it is not possible at this time. Councilman Abdul Haq.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I think we should consult, uh, Chief of Police and Chief of, uh, the Fire. And I agree with Mr. Mayatki. If we are covered for any risk or any, uh, liability. It will be a great idea for our residents to see something happy, something to celebrate after all this time. You know, in closed doors. And I believe we will have a lot more people vaccinated by July fourth. I really recommend that we go ahead, uh, with this, especially that the money is donated. It's not from, uh, the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, yeah, and further, uh, maybe we can go on a rotation basis of having, having the fireworks at. At Warren Valley and maybe alternating it with the Parkland Parks. We separate, separate and have, uh, you know, people who aren't, have to drive further or whatnot. Uh, they could have it closer to their side of the town too. So the Parkland Parks are a, a pretty big park also.
Love that idea.
So we can, we can do something and maybe in the future, we could have something with, uh, food trucks and things of that nature where we could really have a nice party.
Yeah.
Raise, raise twenty years younger now.
Um, Director Conston, did you still need to speak? I'm not sure if I lowered your hand or you did.
I just, um, I did lower my hand only because you had answered the question in regards to delaying it. I don't think that we have time to delay it to another meeting because there is too much to do. Um, I did intend on plant, uh, um, including the Fire Chief or the Fire Marshal. As been done in the past, as well as, um, the insurance company. And as you see in the RFP, um, there are several different. Uh, insurance certificates that this person is going to have to present, um, with the City of Dearborn Heights being named as a, um, rider on their insurance. So, um, I did look into everything that you are talking about. Um, so, you know, it, it's up to you guys if we do it this year or not. Um, I just think that a lot of people are depressed from, uh, being inside for so long. It might be a good opportunity to show, uh. Uh, community, uh, support and still, you know, adhering to the safety of, uh, social distancing and masks. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, let's take a vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
Councilman.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think, uh, Councilman, uh, Wenzel had a.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, uh, Director Conston, uh, she just didn't throw this out there. I'm sure she did a lot of research on this. And, uh, as far as, you know, I've, I've said this before, um, our, what our city needs and our country needs in the world. We don't need social distancing. We need physical distancing, but we need some social interaction. This would be a good opportunity for people to get together in, in groups spread out. I mean, you can't ask for a better place to spread something out. I mean, you could have. Groups of four, you know, and you could have forty thousand people there and they wouldn't even be ten feet apart. But I think it's a great idea and it's something that we shouldn't just jump into, uh, turning it down. Thanks.
Thank you. And I guess one last thing. Yeah, I agree. You can social distance with four people, but who's going to police it? As you can see in other events that have been happening around the city lately, you can't enforce it. And I don't know. I mean, we still don't know where we're at as far as being vaccinated and that's my main concern. Um, at this time, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Conston.
No.
Councilman Abdul Haq.
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
No.
Councilman Badum.
No.
Melanowski Maxwell? No, it fails. Next.
I vote yes.
Don't forget, yeah, Tom Wenzel.
Oh, Tom Wenzel. Oh, I didn't hear that. Tom, Councilman Wenzel?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. It, it still fails. All right, at this point, we have Park and Recreation Director Conston request for bids for renovation of two Eaton Center bathrooms.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move, uh, Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids to Landscape Management for the Justice Center. Might I write one here?
H.
H, number eight.
Before that.
Yeah, we're an H.
H, sorry, uh.
H, like Henry.
Yes, uh, I moved it to Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for the renovation of two restrooms at the Eaton Senior Center. The funds for the project are in the two twenty-two twenty-one Recreation Capital Outlet account as outlined in seven H.
Support.
Board.
For our Councilman Badum, is there any discussion?
Adam Chair.
Councilman Badum, is there a question?
You know what? I, I really, you know, it's more of a comment and I want to thank, uh, Director.
We have questions.
I, I know that this is something that a lot of the residents have been really, really thinking about and working on. Um, so thank you for that and I'm, and I'm glad that we're finally bidding on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions directly related to this item number? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have Police Chief Myers requests for bids for Landscape Management for Justice Center.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for the Landscape Management. For the Justice Center. The funds for this project will be paid through the Police and Court Budget as outlined in item seven. Aye.
Support.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Badum, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the, on the agenda is under reports from Mayor. This is to procure for an assistant. To the City Corporation Council for Federal and State Grants Legal Services.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the procurement of an assistant to the City Corporation Council for Federal and State Grant Legal Services according to the City Charter. And FEMA slash MSP with Michigan State Police Procurement Rules and Regulations as outlined in eight A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Conston, is there any questions directly related to that item?
Madam Chair.
Okay, first of all, I'm sorry. I got Councilman Abdullah. I didn't see his hand at first and then you'll be next. Go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
Mr. Mayor, I just find, uh, Mayor, if you don't mind, if you could just tell us a little bit more about this as far as the thought process. I know you mentioned it was in the Charter, but why is this coming up now and what's your thought process behind this? What's the cause? Just, just your thoughts on this, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Somebody unmute. Okay, this direct, this question is directed to the Mayor. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Uh, where are you?
Okay, somebody muted me again. Well, thank you, Council Chair, Protem Abdullah. So, uh, basically, uh, again, you know, as we talked about in the past, you know, with, uh, being in compliance, uh, with state. And, you know, the letter of nonconformist that we receive from the state about procurement procedures.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going through everything, every, every, every contract that we issue out. We're making sure that we have a procedure, so we can't just, uh, issue. Or, you know, like the, the way it was done in the past, you issue, uh, uh, not contract, but work to, uh, somebody that was, there was not proper bidding, uh, for that particular service. And for this particular one, we have actually, uh, have to get somebody who's, uh, who's certified or qualified, uh, to, uh, to represent us, you know, with some of the, the FEMA. Or any, any homes that were, uh, that we're gonna put up, you know, like when we purchase, there's gonna be a lot of work that has to be done by an attorney. So, and with that, you know, it's also the CDBG can use the same attorney, but they have to be certified. So that's the reason that we're actually, uh, going out for bid on that particular service.
How, uh, so are you looking to have somebody, I, I presume assisting, uh, our council right now, Gary Miyaki, correct?
Uh, well, this one will be, it's not permanent. This is only for the, some of the homes that we're gonna purchase from FEMA.
Okay, so, so that clarifies it. So you're talking about like one and done, just for this one project and that's it?
Yeah, that.
So they're basically subcontracted, not necessarily salaried?
Yes, yes. It's just subcontract for the particular work that we need for those homes that we purchased from, uh, from, uh, under FEMA regulations.
That makes sense. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do see Hassan Jamal and Mr. Corporate Council Miyaki did raise their sign. Is there any for, I did raise their hand. Is there any further explanation necessary for them? Can we move on?
I, I, I would let them also address, there's other, other issues that we had in the past that I would like them also to clarify some stuff for Council Chair Protem Abdullah as well.
Okay, because I think there was a specific question and it was directed towards you to keep the meeting flowing. Um, do either one.
I, I think Mr. Miyaki, I mean, if you, uh, he should speak as a city attorney.
Okay. That's why I asked you. Go ahead, Co- Pro Council Miyaki. Uh-oh, you're muted.
There we go.
Okay.
Yes, just, uh, very briefly, um. Part of the reason why we have to go through this procurement process with respect to an assistant working on this is to make sure. That in order to get reimbursed from the grants, we have to go through the procurement process. So this doesn't necessarily apply to everything that would end up, uh, being involved. And we are going to include it both for CDBG, uh, Director, uh, Hashem's Department as well as for the, uh, FEMA grants that are coming up. So it may have a little longer period with regard, uh, to Mr. Hashem's department. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is, uh, next I have Council, Councilman Abdul Haq.
Yes, Madam Chair, and we haven't used Allen Brothers for, since two thousand and six. And we suppose every five years really to have a new bidding for this kind of service. And previously we lost around thirty thousand dollars from, uh, you know, the grant money where we couldn't locate, uh, or justify. The legal expenses for some of the work which was done. So this is a good idea, you know, to do it on five years basis and this is going to be as needed basis. It's not permanent. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Hassan Jamal, I'm going to unmute you. Could you please tell me what you will be. Cool, speaking in regards to.
I recommend this, uh, uh. This resolution to the mayor, because I am part of the mayor executive team. This resolution is after I did my compliance review for not only this, for other regarding not only the FEMA. Because we are expecting over twenty-four million dollars coming to our carrefour. And we need to have everything in place, otherwise we lose. Similar to what we lost in the past. This resolution was, uh, supported by the decision of not only myself, but the Chief of Staff. Uh, the mayor and also Mr. Jawad. We, we reviewed, uh, you know, our history and the state police. We couldn't find any records of any legal services being acquired since two thousand and six. We are still, still using the ones I with the late Mayor Pratt to Gabriel de Saul. Acqu- you know, acquired back in two thousand and six. This is unacceptable. Uh, I think the council should have tighter, you know, uh, uh, oversight on the financials, on what's going on. Uh, that's why, you know, the city need a filter.
Okay, thank you.
All this.
Yeah, thank you.
Please, you know, I need to explain this because this is lost.
Okay, at this time, council members are shaking their head. They need no further explanation.
Money the city lost.
At this time, I'm gonna say, thank you for your opinion. Um, council members are shaking no, so I'm going, they don't feel they need anything more, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have procure for a real estate title work services for the city federal and state grants.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move City Council approve the procurement of the real estate title work services for the city federal and state grants according to the City Charter. And FEMA slash Michigan State Police Procurement Rules and Regulations as outlined in eight B.
Support.
By Councilman Conston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have purchase of five homes using FEMA grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize Mayor Bazey to make offers on behalf of the city to purchase five homes from the current legal owners using the FEMA grant. PDMC dash PJ dash zero five dash MI dash two zero one six dash zero zero one. Per the grant agreement, the city is required to pay twenty-five percent of the purchasing price. FEMA Michigan State Police MSP FEMA Administrator Agency for the State of Michigan approved the purchasing prices. The total amount for purchasing the five homes, I'm sorry, five houses will be paid by the city and later reimbursed from the grants, from the grant balance by FEMA MSP. Allen Brothers LLC, the legal firm acting in the capacity of an assistant to the City Corporation Council. Prepared five purchasing offer packages for the following houses as outlined in item eight C and the house addresses are. Two four zero three six Hanover, two four zero seven seven Courier, two four one 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 Courier. Two four one two seven Courier and two four three three nine Courier.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there, I have, um, Councilman Abdul Haq, go ahead, please.
Yes, I hope that, uh, the administration will have, uh, you know. Full control on this issue because in the past, you know, we almost lost, uh, several hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's a great program and, uh, I hope we put the right people in charge of this, so we can speed it up and we buy more homes, so we can relieve, uh. Those homes which are flooded from time to time.
Thank you, Councilman Abdullah, please.
Well, I, I just want to make a, a count, common council chair, and, and this is no reflection on anybody running for election right now, so please don't be offended. It's not meant to, towards somebody specifically. But I find over the years, a lot of times the Ekorus Creek comes up and I'm not talking about in this particular case. I'm talking about comes up as a concern for, um, you know, as, as there are elections. So all I'm asking for all of my co-council people, the mayor and the administration, to continue to focus on the Ekorus Creek. Um, this is too important of a, of an issue for all these residents. I feel so sorry for them when I see the water going up people's homes. I mean, I'm, I'm thankful. Thank God I didn't have to go through that and I would hate to. So please, 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 for the administration, for all of the council people, let's continue to focus on this. I realize it's not all, the money's not from us. It's from federal grants, but I hope the mayor and his administration continue to work on this throughout. Because this is too important of a, of a project for our Dearborn Heights community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Bazey, you're next.
Um, thank you, Council, uh, Protem Abdullah. So, uh, just, just to address your, your concern. Um, I've been in contact and also been meeting with, uh, both congressional delegates, both Rashida, Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib and also Congresswoman Dingo. And both at their office, they're actually committed, uh, to helping us with the Ekorus Creek. And, uh, just in the last couple of weeks, I signed two letters, uh, uh, giving them authorization to, uh, to, to speak on the, behalf of the City of Dearborn Heights. And to give them, uh, pretty much authorization to, uh, go ahead and proceed with, uh, with the US government and procuring more money. So I've seen there's two different grants, uh, as of right now that are on the table, but they haven't been approved. They're still in discussion. And we're talking about like between twenty to thirty million dollars, uh, you know, they're actually thinking about for the Ekorus Creek project itself. So one of them, uh, one of the congresswomen is actually looking at, uh, a, a fund to clean up the Ekorus Creek, clear the trees and maybe dredge it. And the other fund that they're looking at, there's actually doing more work and, uh, getting the Army Corps of Engineers involved. So it's gonna be, uh, a, a little bit more, maybe two to three times more funding for that. So I think with Rashida. So I think with Rashida, Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib is that she's actually targeting trying to get right now for, just for the time being, get the twenty-seven million dollars to clear the Ekorus Creek, to clean up the trees and to dredge it, make it a little bit deeper so they can have a better water flow. So she's working on that right now, and, uh, we just had a meeting a couple of days ago, actually, and she's still in discussion with our, uh, with our, with the, with the US government, you know, in DC to discuss the options, see if we can get the money. And as you can tell, uh, later on, and on the agenda, you know, I, uh, I'm creating, uh, an ordinance, uh, an ordinance for trying to get commission for the Ekorus Creek, you know, uh, so they can discuss that, so they can be a liaison between the city, uh, uh, us and also the residents, to, uh, to speak on behalf of the residents, and so we can have maybe the three of us and also the, the congressional delegates involved with that as well.
Great idea.
Thank you. Um, Hassan Jamal, would you like to chime in on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did put this recommendation for a resolution on the agenda through the mayor. As I said, he is the chief executive officer of the city. Uh, there is no politics when it comes to the misery of the people. There is, there is help the city had since two thousand sixteen. This grant, Mr. Abdullah, Councilman Abdullah, was initiated, approved back in March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Who drops the ball? I leave it up to you guys to decide. Is it legislative or is it administrative? I, I took that in March twelve. I have only until August to finish this. Forget about me. Our department right now processing this because it was on, on the books since two thousand sixteen. Now, we are gonna lose about six hundred thousand dollars because we are not gonna be able with all my capacity, with all my relationship personally and professionally with the Michigan State Police FEMA, we are not gonna be able to extend this. It will be a miracle if FEMA Washington will extend this grant another year. So we are gonna lose about six hundred thousand dollars. In addition to that, Mr. Abdullah, or Councilman Abdullah, I'm sorry, with all my respect, there is other grant in process right now, three million dollars. Sixteen homes will be processes right now. It's a combination of, of effort of the executive team of the mayor. And so it's, there's no politics here. You know, there's no, nobody talking about this election. I, I don't work for election. I work for the people. Uh, I, I am a director of, of a function of the city. I function based on what the position requirement function, whether me, whether somebody else, it doesn't really matter. There is no politics. Please, you know, this is no, it's not a good indication for the publics who are living in misery down there. I've been in contact with them for the last two, three weeks. Some of them crying. I had a forty, eighty-four years old woman been waiting since two thousand sixteen. And when she learned about this, she was like, she couldn't believe it. She called her son-in-law to verify that. Mr. Jamal, I never heard of your name. Who you are? You're telling me my house is, is, is already approved for one hundred ten thousand dollars? So I explained to them, it's not only FEMA, it's the people of Dearborn Heights. It's you. You cannot afford the twenty-five percent. Whether it's coming from the water department, where it's gonna come from, Gerald, from the people of Dearborn Heights, helping the other people of Dearborn Heights to get out of the misery.
Thank you.
I did not push this. I found it on my plate. And I just wanna give it to the people of Dearborn Heights to relieve the misery on behalf of you, the legislator, on behalf of the mayor, the administrator. It's under your authority to approve the twenty-five percent or no. Other cities, they don't approve the twenty-five percent. I leave you there, and I hope, you know, you trust the administration to do what's good for the people.
Thank you.
I personally trust you.
Thank you, Hassan.
Thank you.
Point of order, guys.
Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Yeah, we have to have a point of order here. We can't interrupt. Okay, next I have Councilman Wensel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I know this issue is about the, the purchasing of the houses, but, um, uh, living in the South End my whole life, um, this has been an issue for as long as I've lived, sixty-four years. And for sixty-four years, all we've had is talk. Not one thing has been done to resolve this problem. That we buy up houses, we buy up four houses, ten houses a year. That makes ten people happy, but there's hundreds of people that suffer every time we have these floods. And the problem is, it's not like a big pothole in the street that everyone drives over every day, every day, all week, every week, all month. It's something that only occurs a few times a year, but it's catastrophic. It's easy to forget about it two days after the fact. After you hear about the misery, okay, people go out with their lives. And everybody forgets about it except the people that are suffering. We need to quit talking about it. People need action. We want to see some action. Talk, talk is fine. It's a start, but we need action on that.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna limit it to questions directly related to the item. Because we all feel the same. I know we all do. We all live in the city. We've all had some kind of flooding in, even in different areas. So at this time, Councilman Baydun, do you have a question directly in regards to this item number?
Madam Chair.
Five homes that we are purchasing for FEMA.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Respect, I would, I would like to comment.
I'm gonna ask everybody. Okay, I will no longer allow it after this question. You, Councilman Coniston, and then from the rest of this meeting, we can't keep commenting. There's, this meeting is to ask questions and be informed about what we're voting on.
Thank you. Madam Chair, and it, I would just want to thank Director Jamal, the mayor, and working with, uh, you know, um, Rashida Tlaib, Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib. I also kind of just wanna, I don't think Councilman Abdullah was insinuating that people are doing things simply for a political agenda. I don't, I think what he was saying was, let's not forget about this. Let's continue, not just say we're gonna do something, but let's officially move even after, you know, this political, and then he wasn't saying that this is happening just because it's a political election.
No.
I think it was simply, hey, we bring it up during a political election because it's something that's always talked about. There are people that are running. And then it goes away after that. So I, I think, I just want you to know, I don't think he might need disrespect to any of the colleagues here. And so I just kind of wanted to comment on that. Now, Madam Chair, I hope you allowed that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time we're gonna vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have planning commission appointment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Up here, sorry. All right, um, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Mr. Kenji Fujita to the planning commission, term to expire in January two thousand twenty-three. This appointment is to replace Mr. Wesam Isa, who recently resigned, uh, to pursue other business ventures as outlined in item eight D.
Support.
Support.
For by Councilman Muscat, is there any questions directly related to this agenda item? Councilman Abdullah.
Madam Chair, I, I, I would like to see, um, and, and I'd like to ask, uh, our mayor and administration, I think from now on, um, you know, sometimes when there's appointments, whether it's to this particular commission or any other commission, sometimes we, at, at least actually in my particular case, I'll know who that particular person is and I'll feel comfortable voting on him. And sometimes I don't, like in this particular case, I don't know the gentleman. I'm sure he's a great gentleman. Is there any way that maybe for the administration, the mayor's office can start giving us either a resume or some sort of synopsis of, because it, it feels a little uncomfortable. I, I'd like to think, obviously, the mayor did, did his due diligence, but it feels a little uncomfortable voting for somebody not knowing anything about them. Is there in a way, maybe in the future, you can start maybe giving us at least a short paragraph or resume as far as their qualifications? And I'm sure you do the due diligence before you pick somebody.
Yeah.
But in this particular, particular case, can you just give us at least just a maybe a couple of sentences in regards to this particular gentleman as far as why you feel comfortable putting him on the plan, the planning commission? Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Abdul Haq.
Yeah, I do feel the same way, and I hope that the administration will put the right people with the right qualifications on every commission, the city. This way we get the maximum benefit from those commissions. And I thank him for bringing some of the people to put on the commissions like, uh, you know, Lisa Ference, that was a great addition, and I hope we continue in that manner.
Okay, Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, I agree. I've met Mr. Fujita. I know he lives in the South End as I do, but, um, just a little bit of his background and why he would make a good, a member of the planning commission would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, did you still have a comment? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, council members. Uh, I actually, uh, I did interview Mr. Fujita. Also, uh, I, I did look at his resume, and I will be more than happy to send you the resumes tomorrow.
And for the future, like ahead of time, but since, since we're voting on this right now, Mr. Mayor, do you mind giving us at least just a, just a little outline as far as what you thought his qualifications were?
Uh, he's actually one of the, he's a consultant, and he's also, he's a, is a business major. And, uh, he does a lot of, he goes, uh, one, one of his jobs is to go to different businesses and to, like I say, yeah, when a business is in trouble, you know, they go audit and they do, uh, uh, he, he works with the business trying to get them off the speed if there's issues with, uh, with, with their business. So he has a lot of business, uh, 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 business experience. And, uh, and, and again, that's what he does for a living, and I'll be more than happy. That's one of the things that I do. Obviously, trying to make sure that for any, any commission, uh, the person does, uh, fit that criteria for whatever commission that they're in, just make sure that they're beneficial and an asset to the, to that commission and the city.
Thank you. Councilman Baydun.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think Mr. Fujito do a great job, but not necessarily a resume that I think is always needed, maybe just even like a letter of content, just kind of saying, you know, why they want to be on, and if they want to write it to the council, I think that's something that we, we could probably look into as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, under reports from city officials is city clerk senior proposed change in order of the Dearborn Heights regular meeting agenda.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we concur, uh, with our city clerk Lynn Senia and adopt an amendment to the Dearborn Heights City Council uh, procedure procedures to allow other elected officials outside of the city of Dearborn Heights to make announcements during item five, public hearings and comments on agenda items as outlined in nine A. So when someone comes, uh, on behalf of, let's say, a state rep or senator that has the whole area, they might be able to go to other city council meetings, uh, and attend there also.
Support.
For my Councilman Baydun. Councilman Abdul Haq. Oh wait, I'm sorry, all those, oh, nope, Councilman Abdul Haq, discussion.
I just would like to hear from, uh, our clerk. Was there any request made by some representative of other, uh, officials uh, to change this?
Thank you, Councilman. I didn't get any directly, but, um, Councilman Muscat had requested this. So that's why I brought it forward to the council to let you decide.
Okay, Council, Councilman Muscat, was there any request made to you by other officials or their representatives?
Yes, there were. We had county commissioners and state senators and state representatives that came to me and asked for the same thing, uh, on a few occasions that I did, I, I did mention it at a few different council meetings. So, uh, I'm very happy that this has, uh, at least gotten to this point, and we'll see what the vote is like.
Okay, thank you. You know, at this time, I'd like to comment, um, as the facilitator of the meeting, and Councilman Abdullah will agree, I'm sure. It's difficult to run the meeting in the order it has, it is, and to do public comment during the public hearings, you've got two minutes and three minutes. Those are differences, and it's hard enough for me to juggle timing it and making sure the person's not getting out of order and, and commenting on agenda items. I feel it could possibly make it more confusing for the, um, meeting to have people commenting on two different things during public hearings and comment. You know, because now I gotta figure out, okay, are they a public official, and that's why they're not commenting on an agenda item? Or are they just somebody from the public that is just commenting, period? So it, I could see it getting more and more confusing, especially from my end. It's gonna be more difficult, and I don't know if I, it's, it's just my thought. I have to facilitate it. It's not easy to do the meeting anyways. Um, at this time, I have Councilman Abdullah.
Council Chair, I, I, um, Councilman, thank you for bringing that forward, but I had a little concern to be honest with you about this, and, and honestly, I'm gonna vote no on this. And the reason I'm gonna vote no on this is uh, what tends to happen with some of the elected officials that come in. And although they're given, um, you know, a couple of minutes or three minutes, whatever it is to speak, and then we run into a situation, and it's an awkward situation for the council chair, uh, whoever it may be, uh, because I've seen it with multiple council chairs over the years. It's a little awkward for, you know, whether it's a senator or a congresswoman or whatever. You know, there's, there's that respect thing, so you can't cut them off. Well, sometimes they use it as a promo to whatever they've got going on or whatever, election year, et cetera, et cetera. So we tend to listen to them. Instead of the two or three minutes, it tends to end up being five, seven minutes or six minutes. And meanwhile, all the residents are waiting for them to finish, of course. So if we put these guys and gals in the beginning, it's gonna just slow down the meeting from getting started. So all the residents that want to watch the council meeting are gonna be delayed in being able to start the council meeting. So to me, I'd rather do what's in the best interest of the residents and getting the meeting started faster than the elected officials. Just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Councilman Muscat, did you still have a comment?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, what?
Uh, who are you asking that to?
You, Councilman Muscat, did you just?
Yeah, and, and I know, uh, Mr. Miyaki has his hand raised, that's why I asked.
Right, you first, that's why I'm asking.
The, uh, we could have, you know, on number five, public hearings and comment on agenda items. We could have a subsection in there for elected officials or elected official representatives. Then you can go to the public comment on agenda items. It should not be that difficult. It gives, it gives the residents at least time to hear what's going on, on the state or county level. Or maybe even federal level if, if we ever have someone from Washington come in. I, I truly believe that that would help, uh, all the communities surrounding us. So that's my, my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Corporate Council Miyaki, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, if there is going to be an amendment to the, um, the procedures or the rules, there's actually, uh, rules regarding public comment, those should actually end up being changed to reflect, uh, the will of the council. In other words, there needs to actually be a change in those specific rules, um, in addition to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I would like to say it's really hard to facilitate these meetings. And, um, with all due respect, Councilman, you did say senators and county officials were requesting this. In your initial speech, you did not mention residents. Like I said, God love certain county officials. We've watched them go for twenty minutes. You know, you've been there over the years. Um, you know, because they get on a roll and you don't want to stop them.
Yeah.
Um, at this time, I feel it's best where they're at. If they would like, we could arrange for somebody to text them about five, ten minutes before we're getting to that section to give them a heads up to come on into our Zoom meeting and, you know, make the comment. But it, it, the way this is set up, it sounds like it's gonna be too get difficult by changing the policies and procedures and everything else. Okay, we have Councilman Baydun, go ahead, please.
Hey, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I, to be honest with you, I've also had, uh, several different, you know, elected officials that have told me. And I come to your guys' meeting, I sit there for four hours. By the time I want to speak, I've got an earful. I don't think anybody even wants to care, has to care what I have to say. Um, and I think a lot of these elected officials that do come, I think it's very rare when they do come. Uh, we probably have somebody once a month. and maybe we can limit their timing. And I know it could be hard, like Councilman Abdallah said, where we can, it's hard to cut somebody off. But if we say, hey, you know, you've got three minutes, let's wrap it up. Somebody takes longer than three minutes. I mean, with respect, I don't think you're going to want to shut them, you know, ask you to stop them from speaking. But I think at least it gives them that option, like, hey, you have three minutes. They speak over the three minutes. I think they know they're only at three minutes, but they're at five now. That's just my opinion. I, I've had some calls too, where it's like, you guys told me all the way to the end, I don't even want to come and speak at the meetings because it takes forever.
Okay, yeah, because unfortunately, I'm the one that has to cut them off. And sometimes it's difficult to do that.
You're the facilitator.
Dr. McCaffrey, go ahead, please.
Just, just a comment on when officials are often making announcements. They usually do it during announcements, not always during public comment. So I don't know if there's a plan for dealing with that, but usually they avoid it by just going public announcement. So anyway, just wanted to add that in there, and if you're trying to impact that at all.
Thank you, Councilman Abdallah.
Yeah, I have seen time and time, some officials come and speak forever on things related to anything. I would recommend, and I agree with Council Chair, that if they need extra time, they have some subject which is important to the public, that they send letter to the chair, and they ask for extra time to speak, and I'm sure you will accommodate them.
I've always given it to you, you know that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further comment before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call vote. Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Conston.
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah.
No.
Councilman Abdallah.
No.
Councilman Baydun.
Yes.
No. Councilman Wenzel.
No.
Malowski Maxwell, no. Fails. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Treasurer Hicks Clayton Investment of Funds Report for March 31, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council received, noted, and filed the Quarterly Investment of Funds Report for March 31, 2021, as outlined in Item 9B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Building Engineering Director Watland Approval for Remote Implementation Setup and Training for the New BSNA Software.
Councilman Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of the remote implementation setup and training for the new BSNA software in the amount of $6,250 with an annual service fee of $1,000, which includes unlimited service and support, as outlined in 9C and is recommended by our Building Director, Mr. Rick Watland.
Support. Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Councilman Abdallah, go ahead, please.
Just want to commend Director Rick Watland for finally putting these things through. I can tell you, as a Realtor, this is not only very, very important to a lot of the Realtors that do work in the area, but it's also very, very important, as I mentioned to the mayor when I met with them, to a lot of buyers that buy in the area, you know, they want this thing expedited, and then when sellers are leaving the area, they want things expedited and be able to pull up their inspections online. In addition to that, this should give great customer service to residents, because there'll be much shorter lines at the building department. So congratulations to the mayor and director. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions before we move forward with the vote?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Abdallah, because really, we need to move to the 21st century in our city. So the more we have, we can use remotely, the better it is, especially with the COVID-19. And we work in only four days, so let's make it as easy as possible. And it is, you know, a good idea to have that installed.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Emergency Management Coordinator Gavin, City Action Preservation Program, CAPP, Approval and RFP Package.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move Dearborn Heights City Council approve the adoption of the City Action Preservation Program for the properties acquired in 219 and be acquired in 221, to approve the request for Proposal Package for City Action Program.
Easy for you to say.
Preservation Program submitted by Emergency Management Coordinator Lee Gavin and drafted by Corporation Council Miyake. And to approve the issuance of the RFP Package consistent with the substance and requirements of the RFP Package, as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Councilman Abdallah, you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'd like to ask the Emergency Management Coordinator. I did see him on there, so I know he's on the call.
Yep, I've asked him to unmute.
We, if I'm not mistaken, last year, we skipped a year, if I'm not mistaken. So the first question is, are we going to combine two years? One, and two, what action steps do we have in place, or are you putting in place to make sure that this doesn't happen? Because what I am absolutely positively against is having these foreclosed properties sit on the market, sit on the blocks next door to people's houses without anybody rehabbing them. And God forbid, I tell you, I would not want any of these next to my house, the conditions all these houses are in. So A, is this a combination of two years? And B, what action steps have you taken or will be taken to make sure that we don't skip a year like we did last year? And I know COVID situation, but still, I think this could have kept going, in my opinion. Thank you.
So, Mr. Abdallah, we got these homes in July of 19, so it's been almost two years. Yes, it took a while. So in 20, because of COVID, there was no foreclosures. This year, in 21, they just made a ruling that there's going to be no foreclosures on occupied homes. So we'll see what list we get this July for the homes this year. But as of 2019, we had eight homes, two vacant properties, and one commercial property. So the way our, Mr. Miyake wrote it up, it includes the 2021 homes. But we'll have to see, that list doesn't come out, like I said, until July. So we'll get these, the developers will do the RFQs, and they got a couple of weeks to do that. And then as a council, between the mayor and the council, you will, guys will determine developers, and we'll move forward. As you see, it's quite a lengthy contract there. And then step by step, they have to go through the plan. We had some developers last time that me and Mr. Miyake worked with that maybe when I first took over, they didn't get all the paperwork submitted. So we're just making sure that everyone follows the steps and the procedures that Mr. Miyake has in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Corporate Council Miyake, did you need to add anything further to that?
Two, two small points, Your Honor, or Council Chair. Sorry, it's important all day today, so you've been promoted. Two things. One, this is essentially the same package that we had before, except one thing is, obviously, we have 2019 and 2021, to the extent that we have the properties. We will do the assignment of the properties to the bidders in a different order than we did last time. In other words, it had been bidder A, B, and C picking that order on rotation. It will now be A, B, C, C, B, A, and so forth. I think the council chair remembers.
Yeah, I was there.
Right, so we've, we've taken care of that issue, and we've also made some requirements in terms of people being disqualified if they did not follow through on the program the last time. And if there are any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them, since it's a very long document, but those are the main points. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions before we vote on this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I have a question for both Mr. Gavin and Mr. Miyake. Was there any contractor last time who did not comply with the regulation and rules and done the job they were supposed to do?
Mr. Miyake, go ahead with that. You dealt with them a little bit more at the end.
There were two, as I understand it.
Any explanation, without mentioning names, what did they do which harmed the city or harmed the program?
Well, it was actually more, as I understand it, neither one of them ended up signing on the contract, which was a requirement of the RFP Package. I do not know with respect to the one why that happened. And the other, I suspect that it was based on some legal advice that he had ended up receiving that I don't think was very good legal advice.
Is there any liability for us if we disqualify those people from bidding on this package?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
It's a discretionary decision, so we wouldn't have to end up awarding the status in the first place. And it's very and I don't miss things, and it was very clearly covered in the last act.
Yeah, I would like to see the best people, you know, taking those homes so they can get on the tax roll as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers Request for Approval for ARX Community Dashboard Software.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the proposal and purchase and payment for the ARX Community Dashboard Software for a total of three years at $13,384.55 annually, to be paid out of contractual services, as outlined in Item 9E and is recommended by our police chief.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdallah. Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
What does this actually do the police department and the city? If we can, I guess that would go to the police chief?
Okay, let's see.
Hi there.
We got a bad connection, chief. Now we can.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Much better.
So the ARX dashboard is a transparency dashboard that'll be placed on our city's website. This is going to allow our department to share with our citizens all of our statistics and data. So the second that we put it into play with, with our Clemis data, it's going to show arrest data. It's going to show our tickets, what we write tickets for, who we write tickets to by race, sex, gender. It's also going to show what type of runs we respond to. And then we're going to have our own suite where it's also going to show our types of citizens' complaints that we get, the dispositions, our use of force and the dispositions. It really allows us to let our residents see what the police department is doing to show that we're not only policing ourselves when it comes to our citizens' complaints and what's going on in the city, but really how we operate, what our, our current crime trends are when it comes to the type of violations that we issue for, the type of arrests that we're facing, the, how often we face resistance from citizens where force is necessary. It'll also show that hopefully, we can get it to the point where it can show what type of de-escalation is done, so we can show how many times that officers are faced with force, and they're not using it. So I believe this is going to allow for us to be, better serve our citizens, but it's also going to show that our police department is doing the best practices in law enforcement, and we keep making improvements as we grow as an agency. So that's what it does.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under Ordinances and Resolutions, Mayor Bazey First Reading of Proposed Ordinance H-21-01, this is an establishment of a commission on business.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Actually, this one's for the Ecorse Creek Commission.
Of course.
Yes. Okay, so I move that Dearborn Heights City Council
Wait a minute. I've got A, is Establishment of the Commission on Business, B is the Ecorse Creek Commission.
Not what I have. Just the opposite.
I think that was the
We believe you. We did that on purpose.
They tricked you.
Yeah, the agenda's switched.
All right, I'll switch. I can switch them. Let me read it again. Mayor Bazey First Reading of Proposed Ordinance H-21-02, Establishment of Ecorse Creek Commission.
Madam Chair.
These are, these are Tom Wenzel-type of shenanigans.
Yes.
Councilman Conston.
It's H-21-01.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the proposed ordinance H-2101, an ordinance of the city of Dearborn Heights, establishing an Ecorse Creek Commission, providing for its composition, terms, and administrative support, defining its purpose, duties, responsibilities, and regulating its meetings. Be it ordained at the city council, da-da-da, codordances of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, is hereby amended by adding Division 7 under Chapter 2, Article 6, as well as by adding to be numbered 2-593, be considered read for the first time as outlined in 11A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Councilman Abdallah, did you have a comment?
Yes, I would like our mayor to explain to me and to the probably residents what this is about.
Thank you for that question, Councilman Abdallah. So this is what I was mentioning earlier. There's a lot of moving parts on the Ecorse Creek, you know, as I mentioned earlier, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Congresswoman, Rashida Tlaib, Congresswoman Debbie Dingle, they're both trying to get, get some resolution to the Ecorse Creek with the funding. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to create this commission that the voice of the residents, that they can actually be the liaison, you know, with the residents, and also with the congressional delegates and my, and also my office. So they'll be on the ground, and I did discuss this with both Congresswomen, and they actually liked the idea that they could have somebody from on the ground that can speak, you know, on behalf of the residents as well, in addition to the administration.
Thank you. Councilman Conston.
Yes, I, this is a great idea. We do watershed and water management with the Watershed Stewards Commission, and let's not forget, there's a proposal in Congress, and it just needs funding and support to build a, for the Army Corps of Engineers to build a retention basin where our incinerator was in Dearborn Heights, the vacant incinerator property.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on it?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, sorry, I tried to raise my hand there, but I had to do it literally. Yeah, I think this is a great idea, because, like I mentioned before, we, our here is talking. Last time we had our town meeting, there was a, something's going to happen in five years. I think this is a great step, first step. It's action being taken. We can tell the residents, hey, we're not just talking about it, we're doing something about it. So I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Hassan Jamal, is this a question directly related to the item?
Yes.
Okay, what is your question?
The, actually, it's not the question. It is, this commission was recommended to the mayor by a lot of the South End residents who suffered from misery of floods, and they've been active for years. The mayor responded to both upper level and the grassroots from that area. So this commission, Mayor, thank you for putting this commission. I really appreciate that. This is going to help. This is gonna help also our department to deal with FEMA grants, because they are gonna be the backbone of our operation. We have millions of dollars coming through, millions from FEMA. I can say over seven, eight million, and this commission can help us tremendously. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay.
For once.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Now, I'm gonna have to refer to everybody, because this, this is item A with me. I, so now I'm moving it to item B, and it's Mayor Bazey first reading of the proposed ordinance H dash two-one, and mine says zero-one, but I'm assuming we need zero-two now, right? I don't know why mine's backwards.
Tom.
Tom.
Joke on me, it's April Fool's. Um, establishment of a commission on business. Councilman Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council moved that the proposed ordinance number H dash twenty-one dash zero-two and ordinance of the city of Dearborn Heights establishing a commission on business, providing for its composition, terms, administrative support, defining its purpose, duties and responsibilities, and regulating its meetings. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Dearborn Heights that the code of ordinances of the city of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, is hereby amended by adding Division eight under Chapter two, Article six, as well by adding a section to be numbered two dash five nine four, be considered read for the first time as outlined in eleven B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Baydun, Councilman Abdellah. Did you have a question?
No, I just wanna say a comment if, if possible. Uh, our city rely mostly on city property, the person, uh, I mean, property tax. I would really uh like to see uh more businesses coming in to our city to expand our tax base, and we should solicit companies or small businesses to come in as long as they fit with the area where they're going to be established.
Thank you. Any further questions in regards to this before we vote on it? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, I hope this is right, okay? It's C on mine. Councilman Abdellah, Councilman Muscat, and Councilman Wenzel, City of Dearborn Heights Council Resolution.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the following City of Dearborn Heights Council Resolution. Now, therefore be it resolved that the honorable City Council members approve the nine-one-one dispatch division to remain in the city of Dearborn Heights for the administration to immediately start acquiring the necessary bids for equipment and the facility as outlined in eleven C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Baydun. Is there any questions? Uh, we have Councilman Coniston. Go ahead, please.
Just a, uh, yeah, question or statement. I, I would look first to uh, of course, our police chief, which has studied this and is recommending that we be the seventh city for the Dearborn Area Dispatch and, and hear from the mayor's office whether he thinks it's a good idea, bad idea. Uh, we need further study or, and then have a proposal before us, you know, one way or the other. Uh, I know we did previously uh voted it down, but um this is a big decision. It can save the city a lot of money. Most of the dispatch centers in uh the state are regional, serving several communities, so I, I would like to hear from the experts first. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief, would you like to weigh in on that?
If you can, can you hear me, Council Chair?
Yes.
This, this is now at the hands of council. Um, I've put together the presentation. Uh, we showed the pros and cons. Um, this is the decision that the council people are gonna have to make, and it's the decision that the council people are gonna have to accept in the future. Um, we are going to do whatever they wanna do. Um, I will build a fabulous facility, um, but I'm gonna encourage uh every councilperson, every citizen, to go out there and recruit for dispatchers, because I can build the greatest dispatch in the world, but without employees, I can't run it. And right now, we're in desperate need of dispatchers. So, I hope that they can fix that solution too. It's not just in Dearborn Heights, it's in Michigan, it's throughout the country in public safety. So, this is the decision for uh council to make and council to accept and deal with when uh the, uh, in the future, uh, when it comes to staffing issues. So, uh, good luck, and I hope they make the right decision.
Is there any questions directly related to this resolution?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I do have a list. I have Councilman Abdellah. You were first.
Okay, uh, I put with my colleagues uh Muscat and the Wenzel this resolution, because we have been going through this issue for several years. And I thank Mayor Bazey for putting in the budget, the money for this project. And I agree with the chief that we want A, one facility, and we count on him to make that facility something really to be proud of. And I would like to suggest when the contract negotiation comes up for the police and for the dispatchers, that we as city council should look at other salaries around us and to make sure that they, they are uh competitive salaries for those people, so we attract the best of the best to come to our city. And I thank the council, and I thank everybody and all the residents who came and raised their voices, whether for it or against it. And I think this is a great idea for our city.
Thank you. Any further, I'm sorry, I'm, have Councilman Adella?
Um, no, it's okay, go ahead.
Councilman Baydun.
My question was answered, thank you.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, answer it again.
Council Wenzel.
Yes, I have a question for Councilman Abdouhak. Uh, do you think that uh that if the uh, the dispatch center is uh kept in Dearborn Heights and, and people who are qualified for that position to work there know it's gonna be something permanent that uh, that we wouldn't have a problem with staffing? I think, uh, do you think that the, one of the problems is, is that people are afraid to lose their job real soon if it was moved and now that we might, may keep in Dearborn Heights, you think we might, may have an answer to that uh employment problem?
Tom, as soon as the administration announces that they're going to hire, you're going to be surprised how many people going to apply for those jobs.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further comment before we vote on it?
I'm not allowed, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Do you have a question? Not a comment, questions only at this point.
I'm all set, thank you.
I knew that. Councilman Adella, do you have a question?
I, I do have a question for the police chief.
Okay, go ahead.
Primarily. So, uh, I, in, in my particular case, was uh always swayed more in favor of this, I'm sorry, more in favor of a combined dispatch than a, than an individual dispatch, only because I've seen that a lot of counties, um, it's only Wayne County that doesn't have a combined dispatch. All the other counties throughout Michigan are combined, and um, a lot of people said great things about it, including a lot of chiefs. On the other hand, and this is where the question comes to the chief, when um some of our Dearborn Heights dispatchers did the uh event a, in the city hall parking lot, I decided to go there just to listen. I'm one of those that likes to listen to both sides. And part of the listening, I, I got a whole different angle than what I possibly had. Um, the angle was that they start to have a vibe with different police officers that they speak with on a regular basis of whether that police officer is possibly in trouble. Um, they start to know, uh, they gave me another thing as far as locations, you know, where if somebody says I'm right by, I don't know, let's say Target, but they're not on Addus. They gave me the example, which I never thought of. You know, if I'm in the middle of an emergency, like, let's say right by Target, I'm gonna say, you know, and I call nine-one-one, and they say, where are you at? I'm not gonna say I'm at two-five-seven-two-five-fourth road. I'm gonna say, I'm right by Target, right by Starbucks. That was something that was, of course, important, where you have local um administrators. What's your opinion? And lastly, I, I spoke with multiple police officers, not only at that event, but at multiple other times, I contacted different police officers to get their opinion. And almost, I hate to say this, but almost across the board, they were, they were against a combined dispatch, and I called multiple cities, by the way, not just our city. I just want to see your opinion as far as what the officers said and what the dispatchers said. How you feel about that?
On my personal opinion, I, I really have one as the chief of police and not a personal opinion. I was asked to put together a presentation to show that we should be both operationally and fiscally responsible for the city of Dearborn Heights to provide the greatest level of public safety. I believe I presented that with the support of the fire chief. Um, the two of us understand that um what it costs to operate, um, what it costs to staff, and how difficult change is for everybody in any profession. And uh similar to a, a big change where you would go to a combined dispatch, there's apprehension, there's questions, and there's resistance. Ultimately, I put together the presentation. Um, I believe in that presentation, that it showed both sides. Uh, and I think now it's time for council to decide what direction they want to go and accept the decision that they made. And I'm not trying to be rude or, or unprofessional to the council. Um, I'm saying that I can only lay it out in one way, and uh we will, I will do my best to uh not only build it professionally, but to staff it professionally, but I cannot make people appear that want this job. It's up to people that wanna do it. Um, and I will keep pushing to staff it appropriately, if uh that's the course that council wants.
But ultimately, am I making the right presumption in saying that for you, Chief Myers, and for Chief Brogan, are you guys in favor of a combined dispatch or an individual City of Dearborn Heights only dispatch? Because I know you gave us the presentation, and, and I got a vibe from you, but I don't wanna, you know, I, I, I wanna get, and the reason I'm asking for your opinion, not necessarily to put you on the spot, I'm asking for your opinion, because I value your opinion as a chief of the police department. You're gonna be one of the most knowledgeable as far as, you know, the different things that I've asked about, but you would know obviously a lot more than me. What is your opinion and, and Chief Brogan's opinion as far as, is this a good idea to go combined or not? I, and that's gonna weigh a lot, in my opinion, too.
I believe for the long-term viability of the system, for the financial responsibility for the city, and for the operational needs and safety of our citizens, a combined dispatch is equally, if not greater, um, uh option that we have as a public safety agency. And um looking at the people that currently are involved, the recommendations from their chiefs of police and their chiefs of fire, they're finding no, no problems with the system that they're in. Um, and when problems do arise, they work through those. Uh, I believe it's a, it's a great, it is a very, very good option. And I believe in the long-term sustainability, I think it's the best for our city, but I am willing to make ours work with, with all my energy, um, moving forward, if that's what council so chooses.
Thank you.
Questions before we take a vote on this?
Can I get, can I get just that opinion of Chief Brogan, if you don't mind?
Okay, Chief Brogan, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I mean, I could tell you that there, there are pros and cons with, with either way, is what it boils down to. So, there, there's, you, you will have a more uh, you know, what you're hearing from those officers is a more personalized approach with a, with a more localized dispatch. Where, with your, a larger dispatch center, it, it may not be quite as personal, but, but then you may, you may be able to staff it differently for, for some savings. Um, and, and you can still get, you know, adequate services, you know. E-either way, I think, I think we, we did a pretty good job of listing the pros and cons of both, um. So, so I mean, it, it really, I, I think we can't go through all the different points from, from, from the um.
No, but overall, are you in favor of combined or not in favor of combined? I hate to put you on the spot, but let's, I, I, you know.
A, a, and I, I guess, you know, there, like I said, there, there are pros and cons. I would, I would be worried that, that we, we lock ourselves into this, and then, I mean, you know, it's gonna be a, a, an investment to upgrade our um all of our equipment, and then is the state, like, the state has tried to to break these, or to, to combine these in the past, where they, where they tried to um force it upon us. And so, we had, we had to fight against that, so every community would have its own say in how they're gonna do their dispatch. You'd hate to see something like that come down the road. So, so we can't, we can't look into the future and see exactly what, what's gonna happen. So, so there are concerns, and they're mostly, you know, uh, financial concerns from, from doing it on our own. It would be nice if we could share the costs of some of these um expenses with other communities. That's like, it's very expensive to have your dispatch center that's um kept up to date with all the technology. And I think that's, that's the number one concern, but then the trade-off is the, the, you know, more um intimate service with people that you're more familiar with.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Abdellah, go ahead, please.
I, I agree with everything that chief said, both chiefs said, but I don't want to end up carrying other cities on our backs, because some of the cities are not sharing the cost. We might end up paying a lot more than what anticipated. So, I think our independence is more important, and the safety of our people is more important than the money, especially the money is available in the budget.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Or any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we need to have a roll call vote. Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Coniston.
No.
Councilman Abdellah.
Yes.
Councilman Adella.
Yes.
Councilman Baydun.
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yes.
Malinowski Maxwell, yes, it passes. Next item on the agenda is communications. We have the Michigan Department of Envir-Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, also known as EGLE Notice of Authorization.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council received, know and filed the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy EGLE Notice of Authorization as outlined in twelve A.
Support.
Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have new business. This is the business license renewal for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC located at sixty-eight fifty North Telegraph and Uncle Ray's Place located at two-four-five-zero-two Warren.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renewed the business license for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC at six-eight-five-zero North Telegraph and Uncle Ray's Place at two-four-five-zero-two Warren, as outlined in thirteen A.
Supported by Councilman Wenzel, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Council Wenzel, did you have?
No, I'm just putting my hand up early.
Okay, now, okay. You did that on purpose, no. All right, next we have comments from council members. We ask in this section, everybody limit it to three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Council Chair.
Yes.
Uh, my comment is I, I'm traveling the city quite a bit.
Councilman Muscat, your third. I have Council Wenzel, Councilman Baydun, and then you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No problem, okay.
Yeah, wait, wait your turn, right? Yeah, first of all, I want to uh send a note out to all of our residents and their families who are observing Ramadan. Hang in there for another day, you can do it. And uh, um, the uh last, last meeting, uh, the Dearborn Heights Community and Cultural Relations Commission, they handed out some awards to some of our ladies uh in the city, uh, well-deserved rewards, awards. And um, I, I don't know them all personally, but there, one that I do, Marilyn Summers. And she's not just a Johnny come lately, and I'm saying that any of these are, but uh Marilyn has given up over thirty of the last years of her life to the uh youth uh of Dearborn Heights in, in regards to the sports program, the recreation department. And uh she should be highly commended for her, her longevity in this uh in, 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 in her involvement with the city. So, good job, Marilyn. And um, I also want to uh mention that I, we have our annual, our twenty-eighth annual Ecorse Creek Cleanup and Richard A. Young Rain Garden uh coming up on May twenty-second. We need adult volunteers and, and youth also. Um, we also are uh in this, in the process of establishing. We also are, uh, in this, in the process of establishing or re-establishing the, uh, City Beautiful Commission. And if you're interested in becoming a commissioner, I, I've been contacted by several people and, uh. Cut, or if you want to do a contact myself or the mayor's office. And we talked about the Warren Valley Golf Course a little while ago and, uh, I just want to let everyone know that, you know, the Warren Valley Golf Course is open. And it is open for banquets. Uh, so if you have any kind of, uh, activity or something event that you want to plan, get, get ahold of them, they'll tell you what the regulations they have there and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Badum.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. I'll keep it brief. I actually have a couple of things that I'd like to say. First and foremost, congratulations to all the Muslims that are practicing Ramadan. May you guys have an amazing Eid Mubarak. I know that as we're coming to an end of this Ramadan. We know that Eid, we're going to celebrate on Thursday for most of us. So Ramadan Mubarak to all my Muslim brothers and sisters that are. And then for anybody that doesn't know Eid is a celebration after Ramadan. Secondly, um, if we could, I would also like to just kind of give a moment of silence for the people of Palestine and for everything that is happening there. I'm not sure if everybody knows what's happening, but there is definitely a humanitarian crisis that is happening. And I leave everybody with a quote, uh, followed by this, I'd like to have a moment of silence for them. That you are either my brother in faith and if not, you're equal to me in humanity. Uh, so this isn't a religion or a race thing. This is a humanitarian thing that is happening. So I would love to have a moment of silence for the people of Palestine.
Go ahead, Malin, say.
Thank you so much for that, Madam Chair, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Muscat. It is now your turn.
Thank you, thank you very much, Council Chair, Mr. Mayor. I travel the city quite a bit, drive around. And, uh, I'm getting a little disappointed in the way the city looks. I, I, I can't believe how people are just not caring about what we would call curb appeal. And, and I think Councilman, um, Dave Abdullah in his real estate agency knows what. What the curb appeal and how that goes in, into purchasing or selling a home. Uh, for some reason, I, I, I think that the, the ordinance department may be shorthanded. But w- we, we need to start doing something. This, this, this is starting to look real bad. You know, I even traveled down Wilson, which at one time was a showpiece of, of the city. And, uh. Uh, it just doesn't look good. The weeds, you know, if you don't want to spray your weeds, that's up to you, that's fine. But you should at least cut them twice a week so they're not two feet tall. I mean, the den lines, once they grow and the yellow flower goes away, they're, some of them are at two feet tall. We've got to do something to make this city more presentable. Okay, uh, and, and that's not, uh, a knock at the administration or the ordinance department, that's a knock against us. Okay, and I include myself in that. Uh, and each and every one of us needs to stand up and take care of our properties better. Because that's what makes our city more attractive to other people coming in and want to raise their families here. And again, I keep seeing cars still parked on the street on trash pickup. I, I still see trash, uh, cans still in the street and not on the, of the grass or the approach. A- and we get, I get phone calls where people are arguing amongst themselves. Why, I hate my garden's cans not getting picked up because so, so parks is car there. Tired of taking these phone calls. We need to do something. I don't know what we can do, but we have to do something and, and, and a question to, uh. The mayor, uh, mayor's office, uh, what are we going to do to bolster the, uh, the ordinance department? So we can get some more manpower in there. I, I, I don't know what we're down to, but I don't think we're, we're staffed properly for that. We need to have, start having sweeps again. Because the city just looks horrible. And I'm gonna go back to when I used to, we used to speak, uh, before my pre-council days. My big thing was this city has got to get cleaned up. And, and I thought we were going to get there, but. It, it, we're not, we're going backwards real fast. It's not the city of trees anymore, it's a city of yellow flowers.
Thank you.
Can I get Mayor Bazey's, uh, answer on the ordinance department, please?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Councilman Muscat. Uh, there's, so there's two, two, two issues. Uh, the first one is their rental properties. So, uh, one, one of the concerns, a lot, a lot of the homes that you're talking about, their rental properties. And so what we're doing, I had a discussion with both, uh, our building director and also our. Ordinance Director. Uh, and also we talked to, uh, our council or city attorney, me, and Mr. Miyaki and Mr. Roberts. Trying to come up with an ordinance, you know, to come back and start re-inspecting the rental properties. There's two, two things with that. One is the city is losing almost close to a million dollars a year. Because we did away with inspecting this property. So. Inspecting the rental properties took, took that million dollars away from the city. And also made a lot of rental properties, uh, some of them are condemned. And you can't really by law go into them because of the ordinance that we actually voted on a few years ago. So, Mr. Roberts right now working with Mr. Miyaki to reinstitute the ordinance that we can go back and start inspecting those rental properties. Where most of the concerns are coming from. So that's, that's one. So the other thing is, uh, uh, Mr. Dishram and I, we, we discussed. He needed, uh, an additional resources to actually go out and inspect or reinforce some of the ordinance on, on, on homes that. Not rental, I mean, not rental properties. Well, it could be rental properties that, you know, because you can still inspect the outside. Uh, so he's actually working on that right now, trying to, uh, bring in more people, but also we put on a budget, tried to, uh, approve. And you guys will see it on the rap, uh, the, the budget this Friday. So we want to add, uh, an additional ordinance officers that can go out and, um, and make sure enforce the ordinance.
Uh, Council Chair, on, on that, uh, on, on that note. The, the, also that the, the attorneys, uh, and I, and I spoke to both of the attorneys, Mr. Miyaki, Mr. Roberts. We got to find a way to speed up getting these people into court. I mean, we, I've been working on one for over a year. And it's still the same way. This should not happen. We go seven days, fourteen days, twenty-one, twenty-eight. This has been going on too long. We've got to speed up the process of some of these homes. A- a- and yeah, some of them are rental and I don't care if they're rental or not. We need to speed up the process. Okay?
Three minutes.
Do I have a time limit on, on this as a council person?
Yeah, we, everybody has three minutes tonight because we went so late.
Oh, I never knew that, but that's okay.
Announcing at every meeting for the last several.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, next I have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I, I agree with the mayor and Councilman Muscat. Uh, the city has on the books. A, uh, ordinance requiring rentals to be inspected yearly and for. The certificate of occupancy to be in the runner's name. Lot of landlords, you know, look to Dearborn Heights and other, uh, older suburbs to buy rentals and, uh, rent them out or. They become section eight properties and, and, uh, those renters as homeowners don't have the interest in keeping the house up. So I'm glad to see that, uh, uh, we're going to be enforcing that ordinance a little better. And hopefully having these inspections done. As Councilman Wensel brought up, uh, May twenty-second. This, uh, next Saturday is the, uh, rain garden cleanout at the Richard Young Center. Uh, anybody who can show up and help us, uh. Clean the city up and fight blight, you'll be, uh, very welcome. And I want to wish a blessed, uh, uh, Ramadan and Eid Mubarak. To all our Muslim residents that are hopefully having a reflective, uh, uh, Ramadan. And spending a lot of time with their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Abdul Haq, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. I have a question, I think either the building or the ordinance. Some people bought so many homes, so many properties during the downturn of the economy. And some of them are vacant. Now, those vacant homes, properties. Do they need certificate of occupancy? Do, are, are you considering as, uh, rental properties? How they are taxed and how we deal with those?
Okay, who would like to answer that?
Who inspect them? Let's go with the ordinance.
Director Dishroom, I'm looking for you.
The reason I'm asking.
Oh, here he is. Hold on, let me unmute him and let him answer that. Go ahead, please.
I would actually defer that to Rick Watland to answer that question. I don't have a whole lot of knowledge regarding that. Um, if you have a specific property you're referring to, Councilman Abdul Haq, we'd glad to look at that. I am glad that, uh, Councilman Muscat brought up the, the issues with ordinances. I don't want to get too deep into that. Um, I don't want to take up a bunch of time. Uh, but I do want to point out that the mayor and I are working closely. On trying to get people into compliance regarding grass. That's one of the major issues and blight as well. We are working on doing some sweeps and sending out some brochures coming up here shortly. Um, the, the bottom line is that people have to care. There are way more people that are not in compliance with grass and CFO issues than there are ordinance officers. So it's something that we're working very diligently on. Um, we've issued probably. Five, three or four hundred correction reminders in, in the last week or so regarding grass. So we're working diligently on that. So, uh, again, I, uh, Councilman Abdul Haq, I'd refer that question to Director Watland, who's here.
Uh, Director, do you normally leave more than one notice? For people to correct. You know, s- some, something which is not right on their properties or you issue a ticket for them immediately?
Uh, are you referring to grass or is there something else?
No, to pro, blight the property.
Uh, blight, for me personally, I'm brand new to this position. Obviously, I've only been here about five weeks. I'm not as tolerant. I'm, I'm pro-ticket. I'm pro-getting people into court. Unfortunately, as, uh, Corporation Council Miyaki will tell you, there's a process, you got to issue a, a violation, a reminder. You give them the opportunity to rectify the situation and then you follow up with a ticket. And then they'll be, they'll be, uh, given a court date at a later time. The court's backed up. Obviously, we have, uh, COVID to consider. All of the, all of the, uh, court hearings are held via Zoom currently. So it, it's, it's a process. It's a lengthy process and I, I understand, uh, Councilman Muscat's frustration with that, but. I don't have any tolerance. I, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever we have to do to get these people into court and into compliance. And the bottom line is we have to have residents that care about their property with regard to blight, with regard to grass. Because there's only so much we can do. If we had more cooperation, it would be a lot easier. So I'm appealing to the residents.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. For Director Watland. If, uh, property is vacant for several years, does it require CFO? Building Director.
I'm not seeing him. Does anybody else see him?
Yeah.
I, I think maybe, maybe Corporation Council Miyaki could weigh in on that. I believe that, that people aren't obligated to get CFOs, uh, like. Re, re-updated unless there's a change or transfer.
Go ahead, corporate counsel.
Uh, yes, my understanding is that there are two different levels. Uh, there will always have to be a new CFO whenever there is a change in title to the property. Whether or not that CFO is a full CFO or can end up being temporary, uh, without people living in it. Um, my understanding of how this has been administered in the past has been that we have ended up having. Uh, two levels. And if someone is going to have to live in the property, then it's at a higher level. But we have not ended up having some, uh, and a- additional inspections. And I think that's what you were asking about, uh, Councilman. And I'm not aware of us having additional inspections. However. Inspections do end up, uh, expiring, I believe after a one-year period. So if you have ended up getting it inspected and then you haven't done anything for a while. Then you have to end up getting a new inspection before you can get your CFO. And also your temporary may end up, um, expiring in the meantime. And then you'll get tickets. And we've had several of those situations, uh, in the past.
Is this considered, Mr. Mina?
I'm sorry?
Is this considered, Mr. Mina, if they don't comply with the CFO?
No, all of these tickets are municipal civil infractions.
Okay.
And, and, okay.
Thank you. You answered my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, everyone. Next we have Councilman Abdullah. Go ahead, please.
Well, mine was just a statement, just saying happy Ramadan, happy Eid, which is a holiday for a lot of Muslim brothers and sisters. And it's the end of Ramadan. So, uh, congratulations, everyone that fasted all month and looking forward to Thursday, being able to eat again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I was just going to say a short little thing, um, Kroger's on Ford Road. Anybody that shops there, there's a cashier by the name of Lynn. I don't know if you're familiar with her. She usually leans on the counter when she's bringing things up, an older lady with her glasses down halfway. Well, unfortunately, she passed away the other day from COVID. And so I'd like to take a moment of silence for her and other residents who have recently passed away from COVID. Because this seems to be a. There seems to be a lot of people passing away recently. So let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I will call.
Thank you, Council Chair, for that because she's a favorite for a lot of people.
I, she was my favorite cashier. I was devastated to hear she passed. So. Um, next we have Chief Myers. Go ahead, please. You do have three minutes.
Yes, Council Chair, thank you. Uh, just a real quick announcement. This week in our country, it's National Police Week and I want to recognize our officers. For the past year, officers have remained diligent. They've provided police services during our pandemic uninterrupted. Um, they sacrificed their safety, their health, their health of their families. To make sure that the residents of Dearborn Heights are safe. We've gone through some tough times in our country when it comes to race relations and, uh, different topics. And our officers have stepped up and proved that we're a first-class police department in a first-class city. And they've, uh, they've exemplified everything we want to see in law enforcement. And they continue to provide that great service to our citizens. Um, they do that at the threat of their own safety, at the risk of their own lives. Our community over the course of the last sixty years have lost two police officers, Officer Dolliday and Officer McCauskey. Officer McCauskey's anniversary of his death for fifteen years is coming up in two weeks. And our officers remember the service that he provided. And, um, hope to, uh, live up to the expectations of Officer McCauskey. That he had for our agency. And I would hope that all the citizens recognize the work that the police officers do. The sacrifices that they make, the injuries that they sustained. And the passion that they have for serving the citizens of Dearborn Heights. I appreciate each and every one of them. I hope for their safety. I will sleep over them. Uh, when I hear the phone ring in the middle of the night worried that something's going to happen. And I hope every resident understands the sacrifices that they make. Thank you. Thank each of them and, uh, God bless all of them. So thank you.
Next we have, um, Library McCaffrey.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Uh, happy Eid, everyone. Uh, have a happy and healthy holiday. I just wanted to announce that Monday, May seventeenth, we will be opening to full building, a grab and go at both libraries. Full building browsing, computer use, study rooms and limited meeting room use will be available. Social distancing, screening and masks are still required and will be enforced. Uh, in future weeks, we'll be looking forward to expanding hours, uh, close to pre-pandemic level, including nights. And then further expand services, uh, beyond that. Also wanted to remind residents that if you're hesitant to leave your house, um, for pickup. Our delivery service is up and running. If you have a hold, you can call us at three one three seven nine one thirty-eight hundred. At Carolyn Candy Library or three one three seven nine one. Six zero five zero at John F. Candy Junior Library and. And we will bring it to you. You can also call us and we will put an item on hold for you. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Amkrep. You need to unmute. Mr.-
Oh, there you go. Sorry about that. Good evening, folks. I hope you're having a good evening. Just a quick reminder that tomorrow from twelve to three, I'm going to have my photo equipment at City Hall. So those of you who still need a portrait-type photo, headshot, please come by and I'll be glad to get one for you. We're going to be using those for a number of things. I know some of you wanted updated photos. Those will be used on the city's website. And in addition, we are currently working on the city's page for the Chamber of Commerce directory. So again, if you don't have a nice quality photo, come on in and get one. Because if you're just going to use a snapshot, you're not going to look good in those publications, quite frankly. So, so again, twelve to three tomorrow at City Hall, come on in and we'll, we'll get a good-looking shot of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Library McCaffrey. You're shaking your head no. Did you need to respond?
I prefer the picture of me from ten years ago to the picture now, so I'm not going to get an updated picture. I like that picture. That's all I was going to say, so.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, next we have Director Dishroom. Go ahead, unmute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to come back on real quick and circle back. As Councilman Muscat kind of started my, my spiel before. I wanted to come on here and talk about the grass issues in the city and remind people to cut, to cut the grass, keep below six inches. Overgrown grass leads to other issues like blight and rats and stuff like that. I just wanted to remind the residents that it's important to keep your grass cut, maintain your property. If you see any issues out there, feel free to email us at ordinance@cityci dearborn hyphen heights dot mi dot U S. Or you can call three one three seven nine one three four seven eight. Also, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Director, DPW Director John Sellme and Supervisor Frank Polsonelli and the Highway Crew of Ken Kupcheck, Ben Hewn, and Gerald Roberts. About three weeks ago, we had an issue, a hazardous issue in a roadway. And we made a call to DPW and those guys responded to the area of Warren and Colonial in short order and mitigated it. And I really appreciate that. It eliminated, virtually eliminated hazard in less than two hours. So I really appreciate that. So that's it. You have the rest of my time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Bazey. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council Chair. I also want to recognize it's, you know, National Police Week. And I also wanted to reiterate, you know, some of the stuff that the chief mentioned. We had several injuries of some of our police officers. There was injuries in a line of duty, so I wish both of them well. Also, want to commend Sergeant Daughter, Officer Matt Core, Officer Joe Barlow, and Officer Josh Wolf this, this weekend. Past weekend, we had served over eleven hundred families. We gave away thirteen hundred boxes, about six hundred toys, about five hundred books. To, we had a family fest, so thank, thanks to those police officers that actually helped out with directing traffic. They did an amazing job. Also, want to commend some of the people from the police department for citations they received. Sergeant Stephens, Sergeant Joseph Stephens Award that we actually, we, the council and the mayor signed on that one. Sergeant Brian Mitchell, Sergeant Michael Gondek, Officer Hanzi Yunus, Officer Christopher Lloyd, also Officer Mehdi Ayoub, Officer John Tynan, and Officer Keith Lawaki, Officer Ty Jasmine, Officer John Kelly, Officer Ahmed Mazloom, and also Officer Joe Bargaski for a great service. They had a letter of, a letter of appreciation. Also, I want to commend some of, two employees for the DPW. They got a letter of appreciation from one of the residents, David Jackson, Paul Sphere. I also want to make sure that there's today's sixtieth wedding anniversary for our former city councilmen, Roy and Nancy Pilot. So I want to tell them happy anniversary, sixtieth anniversary. Thank you, Council Chair.
Mayor, I have a question. You said that both the mayor and council signed on one of those certificates, but I don't recall being asked or signing on any of them.
No, this is for the, this is for the start. We did actually, we presented the certificate a while back.
Okay, yeah, because you said council signed on it and I was never asked, so I was kind of confused. Which council signed on it?
All the council. You signed it yourself, Madam Chair.
I don't recall that.
All the council members signed it. You were one of them.
Okay, I, okay. Next, I have Chief of Staff. Go ahead, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to celebrate also Mother's Day that just passed this weekend and all of the mothers out there. I want to congratulate you and hope that you had a wonderful day. I also wanted to mention the National Police Week and thank, of course, our chief and all of our police department. And also, their Governor Whitmer has proclaimed May as Women's Health Month. So also check out the proclamation from Governor Whitmer and keep an eye on that. But again, a lot of celebrations this month, and I just wanted to point those out. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Nancy Brier.
Hello, two five four five nine Colgate in Dearborn Heights. I think we're supposed to do that. I do have an announcement. We will be having our Dearborn, South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting on the twenty-seventh of May at South three 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 five Beach Daily. We have two speakers. Most people know them. Tom Roscoe, who, Roscoe, who is with Chiffa in the Van Buren corridor. So I imagine some of those things about the creek will pop up because our other speaker will be Hussein Jamal. And I personally have received eight to nine people who are concerned with the aspect of being on a list to have their houses considered. I'm still getting phone calls on that, and I will pass that information on to him at that time. So if you happen to be one of those people or know someone, let them know to attend our meeting because we will address that segment of the creek. Now, as far as what's happening, I personally have, for the last two years, been going over west of Beach Daily on Amherst and checking out that area. I also do west of Telegraph, Hanover in particular, to see what's happening and the plug-ups that are pretty consistent. I'm afraid a lot of the stuff that is put into the creek comes from the businesses nearby and people throwing trash bags. That'll be addressed, and I'm sure that's something we can do with ordinance. And I want to combine maybe my public comment and thank our Chief of Police for his A R X Community Dashboard software. It sounds like something we really need, and I'm sure the residents would like to know what's happening and what we're doing to address those items. I thank you very much.
I will open it up to public comment. This would be comment from the public. You do have three minutes. Raise your hand to be. Okay, I'm Rick Rushi.
Hello, yes, my name is Rick Rushi. I am a City of Dearborn Heights resident. I stay on Gully Road. I am a Bob Constant supporter, and I have concerns about the treasurer's bankruptcies and her ability to manage the city's finances in light of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Councilman Muscat. You have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Resident, this time Ray Muscat, Havlock Street. Just to go back to the blight issue and ordinance, what I said is not anything against the administration or the ordinance department or even the former ordinance department. This has been an ongoing issue for the last ten, twelve years, as far as I'm concerned. I spoke many times about it, and it's very upsetting that we let our city run downhill. And I think a lot of it needs to have some ordinance changes, laws changes. Because we have complained, as you know, Council Chair, even people selling cars out of their homes. And it's a recurring thing. And we, and it's the same people over and over and over again. And yet, it takes months to get them into court. If it's reoccurring, they should be immediately fined. You know, selling cars out at home, this is, this is slapping the residents of the city of Dearborn Heights right in the face when people don't take care of their property and do things of this nature. Okay, it needs to stop, and I, and whatever the ordinance department needs, I'm, I'm there to try to help. And I'm hoping that the rest of the council people also help the ordinance department do what they got to do. And again, I'm sorry to put the pressure on our legal, our legal minds, but you guys need to come up and do something. This, this is ridiculous, the way this is going on. I mean, it goes on for years. This is, should never happen. These are the same people over and over again. I'm not going to get into specific addresses, but you all know who they are. So we need to get it cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam.
Good evening.
You have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
I'm Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. First, I would like to tell Mayor Bazey, thank you so much for a great decision that you took by appointing Director Eric to the Building Department. Unfortunately, I had to visit the City Hall last week and this week to pull up some permits. And I had to pay some of my, one of my water bills. And I couldn't be any happier for the expression I've seen on people's faces while they were doing business at the Building Department that we never had any sort of experience like that before. He's handling very professionally, is working with the people, for the people, and I'm very confident everybody's appreciating that for him. Second, with all respect to you, Council Chair, and to Council Robert Constant, supposedly you made a statement before there is no bashing allowed to any elected official and no bashing allowed during the meetings. I think Council, actually now she's a treasurer, Lisa Clayton, she was insulted by some resident, and we have no idea whether the information that was shared, whether they're true or not.
Right, and I agree. He caught me off guard because I normally would mute him.
Madam Chair, I think I'm talking. When I finish, you can respond to me. If we want to go ahead and start bashing people, I'm very confident and I highly believe there's other people who are on council and they're elected official, that they have more than bankruptcy on their name and they have more than criminal issues on their name. We don't want to start this. Let's keep everything respectfully. Let's conduct our meeting respectfully and peacefully. Thank you.
Like I said, again, I apologize. It was so short. I was shocked that it even happened because that has not happened in a long time. And I think everybody knows. If, I think they went on for another couple more seconds, they would have been muted. They were done before I could even raise my hand and stop it. So again, I apologize because that is a policy. Sam is correct on that. Next, I have Tom.
Yeah, hi, my name is, my name is Tom, my name is Tom Wenzel, and I'm speaking on behalf of a resident at forty-one fifty-five Madison in regards to some concrete damage that was, that occurred during a lead pipe removal. And she relayed to me that she had spoken to Vaughn Martin from Wade Trim and some other people from the city, and she was wondering what her status was on repairing her concrete. I don't know if John could answer that question for her or if Vaughn's here.
They don't have, you might want to call him personally tomorrow. Ask him.
Well, I told her I'd bring that up today. She asked me to bring it up before the meeting, so.
I would, I would call Director Sellme directly tomorrow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Badu.
Madam Chair, I'm going to speak as a resident as well. Just wanted to tell you guys that my father came in to get a permit to just do some uplift in front of his house. He got to meet a lot of the people at City Hall. He said so many nice things about Rick Watlin, so Director Rick Watlin, I just want you to know that my father was so happy with you. And so that was just simply it. Thank you so much to Rick. He's doing a great job in the Building Department. I can't thank you enough. Honestly, he's, he's just definitely a high-class act, man. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Abdulhaq. Go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm speaking as resident. I just want to wish everybody happy Ramadan and Eid and Barak. Tomorrow is last day of fasting. Some people wonder how we fast all day without water, without anything. It's a great for the health, you know, it's a great for the mind. And I hope some people try it for, for a change, for a day or two. Concerning the Treasurer Department, I really hope that we work with Lisa and we put all these things behind us and see that she succeed. Because if she doesn't, we all lose. So let's help her. Let's give her a hand and make sure that she does the right thing for the resident. And thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else before we end the meeting? Hey, do I hear a motion to end the meeting?
Councilor, move to a-
Councilman, I'm sorry. Mr. Strapkowski, you've already spoke, right? Okay, I've got so many names here. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street, City of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. Keep this short as possible. First of all, everybody who's celebrating Ramadan, I hope you've had a blessed Ramadan. And that, also, I want to thank everybody who made a decision this evening regarding our nine-one-one dispatch system. And thank you for keeping it here in our city. Mr. Meyer, Chief Meyer, if you need help finding people, I will help you. I guarantee we will get you some employees. The other thing is regarding the ordinances, if Mr. Dishroom doesn't have his staff, that's going to make things very difficult. And the other thing that's going to make things difficult is making sure that our ordinance officers have the capability of issuing tickets. Now, from my understanding, they're not able to issue tickets the way officers are. So maybe that's something that needs to be cleaned up also. And once again, Mr. Mayor, also thank you for recognizing Roy and Nancy Pilot, sixtieth anniversary. They are my neighbors. They've been in their house since it was built, their original residence. And thank you so much for that. And first, one other thing on here. Oh, the Ekor's Creek, the incendiary property was originally thought of as being a basin. So I hope that's still in consideration. That will relieve the flooding. Because just cleaning it out, I don't think is going to be enough. We have to divert that water somewhere. And I'll wrap it up. And thank you, everybody. Like I said, have a blessed Ramadan, and we'll all see you next council meeting.
Thank you. Corporate Council Meaki, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Gary Meaki, Plainfield Street. Very briefly, I just wanted to mention a couple of points that were raised by council members. One is, we long ago used to prosecute blight issues as civil or as misdemeanors. It usually resulted in a great deal of delay because people would have a right to a jury trial and a number of other rights. With municipal civil infraction, they don't. And if they default, we can go in and get an order to clean up the property immediately. So it actually is a faster way to basically be able to address these issues and more effective way to end up addressing these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment before we end this meeting?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badu.
I move to adjourn the Dearborn Heights City Council regular meeting today at nine thirty-one P M.
To the board.
For my Council Muscat, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Everyone have a good evening.